It's just for me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Throw call please.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Raven.
Here.
Mr. Phipps.
Here.
Mayor Hall.
Here.
Consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Would anybody like to remove an item? Hearing none, I move to approve the substituted minutes of the regular meeting of February the 7th, 2023, the bills and payroll for the first half of February 2023, and resolution number 2023-3236 approving the continuance of a local state of emergency due to the coronavirus, COVID-19. Can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
And.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that have not been identified on the agenda. But the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentation to three minutes and avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you to state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Would anybody present like to address the council? Would anybody online like to address the council? Hearing none, we go to new business.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2023-5460, adopting the amendment to section 33.065 of chapter 33 in the Code of Ordinances to update the mission of the Mattoon Arts Council.
Can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Phipps, and any discussion on that item? They have any comments or Angela?
It really does a matter of updating to the actual way we function. It's really simple.
Okay.
Just a timing thing more than anything, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, roll call?
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. I move to approve council decision request 2022-23-2326 authorize the employment of Anthony J. Rowley as a probationary police officer for the Mattoon Police Department effective February the 26th, 2023, contingent upon successful completion of background, physical, and psychological advance. Can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments?
Yeah, AJ, his little one is tonight, with his wife and one of his little ones. Got two little ones. But he comes down from our Cola PD, we've been trying to snag him for years. And after four or five years there, he's finally decided to come on over. Went to Mattoon High School. Um, attended Lakeland College Criminal Justice Program.
Great. AJ, did you prepare a speech for tonight?
I have a speech if you want.
Let's hear what you have to say, stand up. Come up to the mic, because somebody else. Yeah, you only have three minutes now.
Appreciate the hard work of that department. I look forward to starting and doing some good work here. Being from here makes it easy, so.
Great. It's one of the best speeches we've had.
It's different between the cops and fire. He can come right up.
Unpreparedness.
Unprepared.
Yeah.
And give you some.
That's enough of that. Let's see.
Roll.
Roll call, yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I make a motion to approve council decision request 2023-2327 approving the water and sewer billing adjustment, the amount of $1,648.67 on behalf of Tim Clark, excuse me, located at 1401 Wabash Avenue.
Can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen, and any comments, anything?
Just from the water freeze, water pipes.
Okay.
Christmas.
These are the same scenario.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right, roll call.
Commissioner Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve council decision request 2023-2328 approving the water and sewer billing adjustment, the amount of $1,082.48 on behalf of Half Judith Brown located at 22 Country Gardens.
Second on that motion.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Phipps, and any comments, same thing? Okay.
Basically.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2023-2329 awarding the bid in the amount of $99,990 to Hoddles Incorporated for the wastewater sludge application tank.
Any comments on that, anybody? None. Any questions? Okay.
A second.
Excuse me?
I need a second.
Oh, see, I'll second.
I'll second that.
And roll call then.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-3237 pledging support of tax increment financing in its current form as a valuable economic development tool without adding restrictions on municipal governments and communities they serve.
And a second on that motion.
I'll second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments on this?
This is just the IML has asked us, most cities to go out and that have used TIF in the past and continue to want to use TIF to go out and do a resolution in support of TIF. There is some legislation being asked by legislators to reduce TIF, make it harder to qualify for TIF, reduce the amount of years, you know, not allowing them to extend it out after the TIF for, other than maybe like a year or two. So basically just making it harder for cities to use that as a tool for economic development.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Next section is department reports, City Administrator Kyle Gill.
Really, just been spending a lot of the last two weeks working on the budget, meeting with department heads, meeting with Beth, going over numbers time and time again, trying to guess where everything's going to come in at. That's really, I mean, answering the normal day questions of, you know, concerns of junk properties and stuff like that as well, so. That's all I have unless anybody has some questions.
Hearing none, City Attorney Dan Jones.
Nothing much on my end, business as usual. Kyle's left me alone while he's playing with the budget, so not a lot going on in my world.
You're definitely totally, I can't.
Not totally, I got a few things going.
Any questions for Dan? Uh, City Clerk Susan?
Finished prepping for the work off audit and day-to-day activities dealing with the public and employees and insurance providers and broke.
Great. Any questions for Susan? And next is Finance Beth Wright.
And there's a second duty. About 78% budget. Surplus of 3.39 million. From the year prior. As we mentioned, the art funds are in both the current year column and the prior year column. These are the, at the end of this, the auditors suggested that mobile home services into deferred revenue. Because money's haven't been spent yet. And there are other, in other revenue, there are other differences. Income spelling is yearly fiscal 23, which is over 400,000. Seizure monies were up from $16,000 to $322,000. And interest earnings were up from $3,207,000. And we're getting really nice rate on the home funds, which are most of the branches the city right now. And cash position in January, citywide, 24.9 million compared to 24.70 in December. So not a lot of change. And the revenue track these, we've seen the mobile home tax in February. So the target taxes are complete for the year. Income tax, amen, since our last meeting, use tax, sales tax, and telecommunications tax. And here every year, the sales tax is up by 1.2%. That will come into relevance later discussion of the budget. And our 30 K in the general fund, as of today, is just under $7 million. And to be still, it was just under $11 million. So holding pretty steady. And I've been working on a request for proposals for the audit. I think there were four firms were identified. And one of those defined, thought the bad. And I have a marks and then my responses. And I'm also working on mailing down a contract for the actual gas. Existing contract was a 36-month, it ends April 30th. And prices are obviously down, and we'll look at that very closely. And we're thinking we will probably do, and I'm going to take yours in front of me. Deal rate was 3.2, the yield rate is four, four something.
I think 4.46, I think, is what I want to say it was.
Maybe my luck is still true. And I think it was about 47% more. And so we're thinking we might get a 12-month contract for any of those rates to come down. And that's all I get for the 14 months.
Any questions for Beth?
I will say it on my guess, though, it's down as low as it's been in the last 52 weeks. So I think we're locking it in at a good time.
Public Works Dean Barber?
Nothing for me to say, thank you. That's the area in question.
Okay. Fire Chief Jeff Millos?
We've been there since the last meeting, the guys ran for the 137th holster service. Inspectors rated nine inspections, the majority of those were the schools. I had sent you out late today, my summary that I went into detail about some of the dogs. So we did have two structure fires, and then an arson at the train depot. Sam Scott, it's a great job, I think it was less than two hours. They had somebody interviewed and he admitted to setting the fire in the trash bins. Hopefully work gets out, but not to be as wonderful. Issues Dean's had, is having to be resolved. The guys did EMS training, and then my aunt Tom Franklin at the train building. They've been working quite a bit with AJ, getting him ready for academies. He leaves at the end of this month for the eight-week academy. And I've been working with, on this CAD system, the new dispatch system that will be going into effect later this month. Working with Whitney, I'm an AFG grad. And working on the GEMTD program with Brooke, which once we get involved in that, that shit, we didn't even say. Monies that we typically have to write off for ambulance transport, will be able to get those. So that's all I've got, listening, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay. Police Chief Sam Gaines?
I don't have anything to report. We had our first quarterly training of the year out of range today. I was out there all day, and so I didn't get back to the PD to get numbers ran. I'll have them for you next time.
Okay. Any questions for Sam? Arts and Tourism Angela?
Yeah.
One of the biggest things have we announced, the 13-year Christian artist, Greg Olbass. A lot of positive feedback. He's an American Idol finalist and has the number one song on Christian charts right now. So if that's your thing, people are very excited about it. I'm thrilled about that. And so the plan is that Friday, we'll announce our another one and following Friday, another one. The other thing I would tell you is I've mentioned several times the workshops that the Arts Council is getting involved with students. The League with Lightly grant is providing funding for that. We had Mary Poppins last month. Next month, we'll have Craig Tilly in town to do both a community meeting and a couple of sessions with the kids. And so that is turning out to be a real valuable, valuable thing for the community for the students, but also a real valuable organization for the Arts Council and the school district that we've not had before. But that's all I have.
Any questions for Angela? And Community Development?
Alex is gone, he's at the Rural Development Conference over at Springfield. He's speaking on that tomorrow, on the move to Mattoon, then joining some of the sessions to review. And really, the only thing he gave me is, you know, he's been working on about three different zoning questions and stuff. He's working on possible vacating of alley up off of North 11th, next to Harris Metals. And I did not get building permit numbers today from Steve, but they're continuing to work on quite a few projects. Any questions I can try to answer?
Any questions, okay? Hearing none. Next is the comments from the council, starting with Commissioner Clausen.
Just a couple of things. Kurt and TJ from the parks, along with Rob Pierce, R. Sexton, and then Street Department guys have been out at Dodge Grove getting rid of a bunch of dead trees, starting that process. So they spent, I think, about two weeks out there. It's going to look a lot better. And then I don't know how many people knew Bill Landris, who passed. Bill was, he was with the City Mattoon Water Department. I think he was over the water meters back in, or the meter operators, rather, outside crew. And he had 37 years of service with the City of Mattoon. So I don't know how many people have retired, but I would think there weren't too many more that had over 37 years. Very good in the community, was also a 32nd degree mason, very active in the Elks Lions Club. So quite an individual. So I don't know how many knew him, but.
Right.
Big loss, big funeral today for him.
Good. Any questions? Commissioner Clausen?
Commissioner Cox? Nothing this evening, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Graven?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Phipps?
Just a couple of things. Met with a few citizens over the last few weeks on some street and sidewalk initiatives that we're looking at, and also some pretty cool bike trail, possible bike trail activities that may come to fruition over the next year or so, but that's about all I have.
Any questions for Commissioner Phipps? Just real quick for me, I met the family that was part of the move to Mattoon effort on Saturday. Spent a couple of hours with them. It's nice to see, even though it's, I only met with one of them at this point. Nice to see people that we did attract to the city that wants to come here, they're excited about it. Took a tour riddle and by a few parks, things like that. They were very interested and they will be coming to Mattoon to live here. Went through some contract reviews for Mattoon Sports Complex, taking a look at a modification of liquor license in order to prevent some, not prevent, but provide some events, new events for Mattoon, which we'll bring to the council before those decisions are made. And that's all. Anybody has any questions? Me. Okay. Now, the last part of our meeting tonight is the budget discussion. And I'll turn that over to Kyle, but this part of the session could easily take an hour, may only, if we're lucky. Might take 30 minutes.
Right.
Unless Kyle does a really good job, it'd take five minutes.
I don't think I could use that five minutes.
So, yeah, this is a, yeah, go ahead, Kyle.
So I gave you the sheets, the first sheet is the draft of the preliminary budget. Just kind of broken down instead of going through the whole big budget document. The preliminary deficit, based on the departmental requests, and some of the things that Beth and I put in numbers and suggestions from even previous years. We came in at $142,163 in the red. I'm going to go ahead and scroll down to the bottom of that page or the middle of that page, where it talks about general fund full-time employees. I just wanted to point out, with this budget, we do have some new hires in there. We have a new hire in IT, an assistant to Dalton. You know, we've been thinking, a lot of stuff is coming in on cyber, a lot of work getting done. Dalton's constantly swamped. I think PD can tell you that as well. There's a need for a second guy in the IT department. We do have two new hires in patrol, and this is based off of, you know, what we decided right after you guys took office. We had the public meeting where you guys wanted to set priorities. Adding police officers was part of that. We added one in this current year's budget. So we're at 39. Where a year, two years ago, we were at 38. So we had hired one this year, and then I've put in for two more this coming budget. Fire Department, I put in for an assistant chief. You know, when we had the ambulance, we had hired an assistant chief for, to oversee the ambulance side of things. Jeff's always very busy. So I've kind of put that in there. And then, Street Department, I also added one. Again, that was just from, carryover from last year. We've been trying to add people into the street labor pool. And in the Park Department, we put two in there. One is a replacement really for Richie, four who just retired, and then one new one. So we'd have four in the Park Department, where we've typically had three in the Park Department. So I just wanted to point those out. That are the new employees that are in that 142,000 deficit. So Beth and I were also looking at other things. We've, in the past, the history, at one point, when we were tracking all of our public works guys and where they were working out of, it was 55% out of the general fund, 22.5% out of water, 22.5% out of sewer. Over the years, as budgets got tight in the general fund, we ended up moving that to 34% general fund, 33 water, 33 sewer. Knowing that the general fund's been a little bit better the last couple of years with surpluses, I suggested maybe we move that to 40%, 30-30, taking baby steps to moving that back towards the 50-55% general fund. But I think that is something we need to do. Again, water and sewer has helped out the general fund in the past, and I think it's time that water and sewer gets more attention that they need to, items that they need done. So Dean, do you have any other comments on any of that?
No, I'll repeat what you just said. We were happy to help when the general fund needed help. And we got ourselves in a little bit of a situation where we.
Right.
So we still on track to continually raise rates slightly each year? Seems like we passed something.
And recommend a 2% rate increase this year, which is the same as last year. And probably stay on that number. Now, I don't know. So that, make that the comparison.
Going, making that move at 40-30-30, that does hurt the general fund $150,000, roughly. You know, there's been talk about more. I think I tried to do a quick number, 55% would be $525,000 if we went back to where we were originally. So that would be a big step to take all at once. Anticipated increases in the electrical and natural gas, or natural gases, like Beth just said, is coming to an end here in April. And so we're going to have a little bit higher cost in natural gas. Our electric is good through the end of October. And then our city buildings will see an increase is what we're projecting. Hopefully it's not as bad as what the residents seem. Hoping that the electrical costs are, will start coming down. But we have put a 50% increase in there, so that's another 98,000 negative going the wrong way. So that put us about $390,163 in the hole. So how do we get that back to a balanced budget?
Can I interject a quick question?
Yes.
We're talking about, actually amounts that we should add back to the general fund, but on the audit, where did we end up on the audit fees? We know that they're going to go up double.
There was an allocation that was going to be passed. And proposing that we modify that. It did a. I assume that we, the existing, are going to the last audit, it's just over $66,000. So I assume we got $100,000 in the general fund, I think at 30%.
Okay. So you do have roughly, would.
We might see our, our, be double.
Right.
So the estimate that I put in is probably short. The fee was allocated to water and sewer general fund, in-town staff, libraries, and tourism, and the revolving loan fund. But there are more funds than that in the city. And so I'm thinking that we should make some allocation to every fund.
Yeah. So, so we may have some, some war to add to the 390, but we don't know how much. You have accounted for a big chunk of that at this point, increases in audits, okay?
Right.
It's something that.
And I will point out, and when you get down here, it says negative 3,000.
Right.
We really are okay at negative 25,000, because there is a $25,000 spend down in arts and tourism and the Arts Council. So it's okay to be negative 25,000, is basically balanced, counting that Arts Council spend down of their money. It's really not general fund that it is. I mean, it is general fund, but it's, they're spending down some of their money.
Right, okay. I see, yeah.
So that'd be close to covering that? So that, that'd be close to covering that? So there may be some little adjustments that we need to do still. When we started out this, with the talks of recession and everything, we held the sales tax level. Again, Beth had just reported on that we've been about 1.2% increase over last year. We talked about increasing that 1% over this year's projected number, which would add 99,000. I don't think that's too far off. I mean, yes, it could be flat. We typically haven't seen flats. Usually we've had about, you go over the last seven years or so, it's been about a 1% to 2% increase per year, other than COVID. COVID started jacking it up quite a bit more. But then there's always been a few years that have corrected where maybe we had one year of a, a 3% decline. I don't think we'll have that. We're usually a little bit slower whenever we do have a recession. We're usually slower to react to the recession than the bigger cities. But then also as money comes in, we're usually a little slower to see the growth as well. We originally had 160,000 in the ME fund for an ambulance. We've applied for grant, a low interest loan. We realized we don't really need the 160,000 if we do get that grant or even that, it won't be in, we wouldn't be paying for it this year. It'd take over a year to get the thing built. So we reduced that 20,000, but we still wanted to put 140,000 in for the future purchase of an ambulance. City Hall wiring, something that we were talking about doing for VoIP phones to maybe save some money. We talked about moving that into this year's budget and have some money in video gaming building that we would be taking that out of. That saves 1,000 in next year's budget. Just two servers for City Hall, again, that were scheduled to be in next year's budget. We're trying to see if we can purchase them for this year's budget out of the same video gaming funds. And then that would save 25,000 from next year's budget to go ahead and purchase them Purchases of computers in the PD. We were going to purchase five tough books for the squad cars and then five next year. We went ahead and tried to purchase all 10 of those this year. That will save 18,000 in next year's budget. Purchase of one new squad car this year would save 40,000. We were budgeted to do three squad cars next year. I would like to buy one of those squad cars this year and then getting to this a little later on, we have a surplus this year. I would like to purchase a truck. We have an old, older Dodge truck, doesn't have a lot of miles on it, but it is probably 10 to 12 years old.
Getting some rest.
And it's starting to rest a little bit. We'd like to replace that with a new truck. And with the surplus we have this year, this would be the year to, to try to do that and then move that truck into, the existing truck into the Park Department or another department that needs a truck. Eliminating one of the two Park Department employees, new hires. Like I said, one's really a replacement, one's a new hire. So if we eliminate that, that's 65,000. Eliminate the new hire in Labor Pool, so we're at 16 or, we were at 16 this year, keeping it at 16 instead of increasing it to 17. Eliminating one of the new police officers, again, I had two new police officers in there. Cutting one of those police officers or consider a COPS grant. Now, I had Ryan do some looking on the COPS grant. You can get 75% of a new hire salary for three years if we do the COPS grant. And then we have to maintain those numbers one year after that. So basically, if we do hire two this year with those grants, we have to keep our numbers up for four years, the three years of the grant and one additional year before we can actually start reducing numbers count in the, in the police department if needed to by budgets.
What would happen in that scenario if we have the, it's a little bit apples and oranges, but if we have the same situation that we, that we're seeing in the fire department where we go through the COPS grants process, we have to stay at that number? What happens to that grant if we're just not able to, because we're just not finding applicants?
Uh, it'd be depending on the grant writers. I mean, they could, I think we'd have a good argument for them to say, hey, we're trying to hire them, but we can't hire. So I think they would, you know, take that into consideration. If, if it's early on that we couldn't get those two guys right now, I think you have five years to do the hire. You don't have to hire them necessarily. If you ask for the grant, you don't have to hire them both, say this year. You could hire one this year and one next year as well, if you applied for two of them in the grant.
Okay.
That's something that we can consider as well.
So would that be beneficial to keep our numbers low? So that we don't have to keep, you know, if we have a police officer retire and we're, you know, up two or three that we, that almost makes it sound like we want to keep our numbers low in order to not...
Yeah.
Put ourselves in a bind.
Yes, when we look at it or have it low before you ask for the grant, so that way...
That way then we get them and then keep them.
And then allocate audit fees to other funds that saves the general fund $5,000, which put us at 3,000 still in the hole or in the red. But again, we went back and looked at it. The festival management was, not festival management, but the arts was going to spend 20, down 25,000 of their money. So we'd be okay. Basically, anything 25,000 in the red is really a balanced budget for the general fund. Any questions on any of that? I kind of went through that kind of quick. But I'm just kind of curious on thoughts, where you guys think, are we heading in the right direction? One more thing I would say is, in the past, we put 20% of the video gaming funny, video game funds into five categories, which was demolition, repair of buildings that we typically don't do, equipment that we typically can't afford to, to buy, pensions and surplus. In the last two years, we haven't put any in surplus. We've done the pensions and then we only put 10% in the other three categories, demolitions, building and equipment. I have them back at the 20% in this year's budget as well. So I've been trying to restore things back to what they have been in, in the past.
Just a quick comment. The 390,000 that were short, and we got some items to make it up. I just did a quick calculation of the 390 that we need to make up, 90,000 is made up by shifting expenses between years, those four items. And 173,000 is made up of reducing the number of people that we have, had in the budget. So then the balance of, of that and 390,000 is really pretty much the first two items at the top, which may be sales taxes, what we should be doing anyway. Yeah, so shifting, I mean, shifting expenses from one year to the other makes up about a third or a fourth of our objective to balance the budget.
Yes.
Just a quick comment on that.
And, and that is kind of a practice we've used, some of that building funds and, and equipment funds as, as kind of a contingency fund. We, I mean, as things came up, come up, we do spend it on items that we normally don't, but, or we wouldn't normally, unexpected costs, but then at the end of the year, we always seem to have some money left over in there and, and I've been moving some of those project costs forward when we can. One other thing I want to talk about is the projected this year and this year's budget that is ending here in April, we have about a 1.7 million dollar surplus. The last couple of years, it's, it's been about 1.3, not counting the ARFA funds. Those have been good and I think a lot of that is COVID from, you know, getting some extra sales tax from cannabis, online sales, people staying in town.
Say that again.
I think a lot of that reason that we've had a big surplus is cannabis sales from, shared with the state, some new revenues on that, online sales, we're getting online sales shared from the state. And then when COVID came in, you know, a lot of people were not leaving town, everybody was buying their supplies here. And I think that helped a lot of, you know, buy local is a lot of that as well. So one of my suggestions with the 1.7 surplus, million dollar surplus was buying that PD truck that we typically wouldn't buy or I've had harder time trying to get it into the budget. Another suggestion would put 500 to a million dollars in the pensions. That's something that, again, we've not been able to, we've been putting more in than the statutory minimum, but we haven't always put in what was recommended. This year, we actually have the full amount of recommended plus some going to the pensions, but...
Even without the 500,000 or the million?
Yeah, even without the 500 or the million. So, you know, that is just something that we've, we've got to tackle by 2040. And that's a, so this would, wouldn't go a long ways, but every little bit helps and it would help hopefully if they, you know, they invest the money correctly and wisely that it will help maybe keep down our actuarial costs that we need to put in in future years as well. So keep those manageable. And then I had, you know, ME fund, we can always put some money in the ME for future purchases. It doesn't help the audit, but it does dedicate some of that surplus money to purchases of vehicles for different departments and, or to the capital fund, which is another one that, you know, we can always have more projects than we can do.
Right.
So able to put some money towards that. So something for you guys to think about, any discussion that you guys would want to have, I'm willing to...
We don't have to spend that money, correct?
No, it's just going to reserves. So we don't have to, to spend it. One thing it does do with it going into reserves, it does, we're hearing that sometimes on these grants, they're saying, well, you got money in reserves, go spend it there. I don't give you grants.
Technically, money going to the ME fund doesn't spend, doesn't really commit the money to anything. If we put that money in the ME fund, we could take that out or put it on something that, that we, we've moved that money around for different projects, right?
No, we haven't, we've never moved it around, but again, if we put money ahead of time, we may not spend it in next year's budget, but we'll, you know, we won't add any money to the ME next year. Like this year, we still have money for trucks and mowers and stuff like that in other departments that we put into the ME. But, you know, if we were to put money into the ME now, we may not have to put that money. So I mean, that's another way of helping next year's budget, but...
One other thing that concerns me a little bit is on the fire department, you were, not that we don't need a assistant chief, but if we get an assistant chief in the fire department, that takes one, most likely that takes a fireman out of that staffing level.
Yeah, I'll talk to Kyle about that. If it is, does stay on the budget. I can't, until we get at least 27 guys, you know, three more people hired, I wouldn't, you know, remove somebody.
Yeah, unless there is another option, and that is you hired someone outside of the department to fill in for the assistant chief position, which might indeed, could happen because someone might take an assistant chief position that's available somewhere and, and that wouldn't be taking something from us. And I know we probably haven't talked about that very much, but if you got the right...
I have not looked that now.
Right, I mean...
But that is, that is a possibility.
But yeah.
But one other thing I would say, and you know other people in other departments that might be interested in that assistant chief position, I would guess. We just haven't went after those people yet.
Is it possible maybe to shift some responsibilities to the shift captains and give them like a stipend to take on those responsibilities?
The way I have, would, would like to structure this, the assistant chief would not only be over the ambulance operations side, but they would also be the inspector, technical inspections and training as well. So...
Who's doing that now?
Yeah, three guys, right?
One of the captains is in charge of training and then I've got two guys that are inspectors and a third one that is in, we'll finish up this year, his class, so I'll have...
Three inspectors.
Three inspectors, one of each.
So why do we need someone over them?
For, well, one person to go to as far as documentation and... One thing within the email that I sent you that we found with the schools is there was a breakdown in the communication, not on necessarily our end, but at the state fire marshal's end. Where, for instance, Riddle School, they had entered the zip code is 61988. So the last two years, those reports have went to nobody. So it'd be one person that oversees all the documentation and reporting for the inspections.
And that can't be one of the three that are there?
My, yes, yes, it could be. It is now, that's why I've got...
I guess, I guess my thought process is we're getting to the point where we got too many chiefs, not enough Indians, so to speak. We've got management managing one person or two people. Why, why do we continue to have layers of management if we can shift some of that responsibility to people that are doing it and have one point contact?
We had looked at previously the stipends. Where does that stop? And the example that I've given Kyle is like, I've got a guy that is responsible for giving cleaning supplies, toilet paper, paper towels and that's, his, his role is important. But if you're in the bathroom washing your hands and there's no paper towels, it becomes even more. So does that person that is in charge of ordering all the supplies, does he deserve a stipend? Same way with the EMS, I'm getting a guy that orders all our EMS and tracks our AEDs, does that deserve a stipend? My concern is when you start giving stipends, are we open enough candle or spots to, because I've got a guy that's in charge of front end.
One guy that does more of the wiring.
Yeah, yeah, you know, they've each got their own little niche down there that they know, there's different guys that are responsible for different things.
So we pay a guy $100,000 to order toilet paper?
He'd make a lot of money.
Well, I mean, the time you factor in benefits, to order toilet paper?
That was, but that was our concern.
No, I'm saying if we hire an assistant, then I'm assuming that assistant now will be in charge of the toilet paper?
No.
Not necessarily. My point was with stipend, so where do we, where do we draw the line for, you know, giving out stipends? You know, because everyone down there, I've got a guy that does fire prevention, he makes sure we add all the fire prevention materials and do this EBS side.
Gotcha.
I got a question on the revenue side.
Okay.
Looks like two line items, income tax and personal property replacement tax are coming in a lot higher than what, what we've budgeted for next year, 750,000 roughly. So I was just wondering how that, how that kind of works.
And those figures are used on protective bases to calculate the other.
On the income taxes as well, the, each of those. Okay.
And I believe they are down this year, and they're projecting it to be down this year compared to last year. But.
For 2024.
Twenty, yeah.
Cause 2023 is coming in, for example, income tax is over 3 million and.
And. I told Kyle, their estimates have historically been low.
Yeah.
But that's the only information that I've worked with.
So that was 800,000 over what was budgeted last year. I'm just wondering if there's any, we manipulate a lot of the expense side, I'm wondering if they.
Apparently the reason why.
Budget numbers there.
Right.
It's coming stronger. The personal property replacement tax comes in and goes out. Pension fund in wide degree. Doesn't matter. But the income tax.
Yep.
And then I don't know when they started using the lower population as well. I don't know if they used it last year. Okay. So all I have on that, unless you guys want to go in to look at any line items or anything, more discussion, and then I also have the ARPA funds allocations that we can discuss if you guys would like to do that.
Before we go to ARPA funds, so what are the next steps with the budget? You, you've made some recommendations to balance the budget.
Curious is, you know, how do you guys feel about those? You know, are we heading down the right track or you want us to see something different? You know, that 40, 30, 30, I'd like to know what you guys feel on that. Is that too much, too little? Good starting point? I mean, that's kind of why I looked at it as a starting point to kind of ease back into, you know, next year. Maybe we do, you know, 45 or 50, 25, 25, or, you know.
Or at a minimum, maybe keep it 40, 30, 30, but it's.
Right.
I agree with you, it's time to start bumping that up back and replenishing that water sewer fund a little bit.
Yeah.
I think you're on the right track.
I, I do like the idea of putting some of the money, excess money in, in pension expenses, unfunded pension expenses. We do have until 2040 to solve part of the problem, but we're not getting there. We're not making any progress at all there. And, and I know there's a discussion about extending that 2040 date to a 2050 date? Or potentially funding the pensions, not at 90%, but maybe at 80% or something like that.
Well, I, I would put this maybe in this perspective, so 2040, looking backwards is 2005, right?
You mean what now?
20, 17, 17 years ago, 25, 2006, right? It wasn't that long ago, 2040 is going to be here pretty, pretty darn quick.
Right, it will be.
So if you, I mean, if you kind of look at it in the rearview mirror.
Right.
We've got to start making some, some annual contributions to, to do the catch up.
Clearly, the state of Illinois, who passed the rules for pensions, has not offered anything to solve the problem themselves. And I'm not suggesting that we recommend that pensions that have been pledged are met. I'm just saying, how can the state who passed these laws help us get there? So far, they haven't volunteered anything, but they haven't really been up against that deadline yet. They don't feel like, I mean, they still think in 2040, that's a long ways off, or 2050, if they're going to make some changes. So, so I guess where I'm going though is that making a contribution of even a million dollars for pensions is only a small percentage of what we, you know, what we've got unfunded. But, but making that contribution at least does have a positive impact on who's going to be in this position that we're in today, when they come and we leave.
Right.
We don't want to increase the problem for them, we ought to be working at least maintaining, but if not, doing, making a little bit of improvement. We have always, this council has always been one to pay the requirements that we've required to make and then some.
Yeah.
But this, this will be the first really significant effort that we've been able to make. We've been in a position to make for pensions. So it makes a little bit of sense to me to do that. Again, that's just sort of my view and it's not, you know, a departmental issue, it's more of a citywide issue that we ought to, we ought to consider.
So how's the downstate want pension consolidation? I assume with interest rates going up, they are, that should be increasing as well? Is that helping us?
They had a good.
Numbers on it?
They had some good numbers and I think the actuary reflected that, I think, on some of the investments.
Sure, based their numbers on the April 30 valuation.
So, yeah, last. So last year, April 30 was good, but.
And, and the place that our pension fund have a significant amount of their loan release as prior investments, those already came, we're not paying for others to consult them. As they mature, those proceeds will be transferred.
Yeah.
So those investments don't throw up any cash. The value fluctuates, the market value then their life investment status, but.
You know, Jim, to your point, the, the theory was that by doing this consolidation of these pensions, that they would do better. It hasn't been around long enough to see if they're actually doing better. Are maybe some things improving with interest rates? Yes, but it had nothing to do with what any this consolidation did. It's only because of economic situations. What, what, what are they actually going to be able to do long term to be more efficient and effective in doing their jobs? And that's where they're going to make up their difference. What they may do, if they really are, is give us that money back. In theory, that's the way it would work and we would have more contributions to pensions. But even if they, you know, it'd take a huge, huge improvement to make a big dent. Just like, even though we're making some effort to make things better, it would seem, I would be in favor of, of making a fairly significant contribution to the pension funds. And that still leaves us, even if we make the full million dollars, between 500,000 and a million, it still leaves us $700,000 to put other places, just because of the improved position from, you know, the year that we're in right now. So, and, and I also, again, I'm back to the question, and Sandy, I don't know if this really, I don't think it really conflicts with what you said about what firemen do and don't do, because we know they do have some, some available time during a typical day that they could do things like this. And it wouldn't be, I mean, otherwise they wouldn't be doing maybe less significant things. And we don't need to add, we don't need to add pay for someone to do their job while they're already sitting here where they could do it. So I'm not really in favor of doing additional fees for that. But, but boy, if you could get somebody outside, that would make a, to me, that would make a big difference. Now, whether you could do that or not, I don't know. You said yourself, I think you started to say yourself, you can't really afford to lose another person downstairs. Cause you can't hire another to get that.
I would, and so we, I have to, so you would, you know, I have to tell Kyle. Once we were 28, you know, personnel downstairs, take one from the board, they moved the staff to 27.
Right.
We'd have to hire four more people before our deal.
Yeah, and you haven't been able to make progress, I mean, not your fault or our fault, we just haven't been able to make progress.
I can definitely look into it. You know, salary, stuff like that, that, you know.
Not going to hire.
Mayor, the audit report that we heard from Larry recently, was, was there two or three things mandated in there that we were supposed to be doing? And if so, was, was there a cost associated with that?
Were those internal control procedures?
Were they, that's what I was going to ask. Was it as much a monetary thing as it was like an accounting procedure or something, right? I'd do something with grants and.
Right, I don't know of anything that was monetary.
I was just wondering.
Okay.
Okay, I was just concerned if there was any cost, this might be a way to knock those out too.
Yeah, I don't think there was.
Somebody had money left over?
We're just internal stuff.
Okay.
Do we want another meeting on the budget or, you know, may proceed kind of how we're heading? And have discussion in April? Do we need to have another meeting in two weeks or?
Personally, I, I like to, I think this is a good start, but personally, I'd like to have time to digest the, the detail behind it all.
Yeah.
I'd like to see if we could, as a council, agree on the, the pension contribution, whether it's half of that 1.7, 850,000, or what the mayor said of a million. And then maybe if we can kind of get that agreement in place, like to see that if we could.
Do we want to set a date? You guys have your calendars, so.
So with regards to the pension though, you really can't, other than a, we don't know. We may have something, we may end up with a million dollars instead of a million seven, so we don't really know for sure. I mean, yeah, you're anticipating that, but something could happen to where we have to spend down something.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we, we tried to, when we met with all the department heads, looked at the line items and where they think they're going to spend and what they're going to spend, so. Yeah, for the rest of the year, where they think they're going to come in at the end of the year. So I mean, I think that will fluctuate a little bit, but again, I think we're usually conservative. So I wouldn't doubt if it's higher than that.
So we, so we have plenty of time to.
On pensions, yeah.
Yep.
You know, it might be a value on the budget, if, if somebody has a strong feeling opposed to what's been recommended, then they ought to, they ought to send that to you before we meet again. To your point, Dave, we haven't had a chance to really analyze everything at this point. We've got some recommendations here, but, but we also have to move ahead. And, and maybe when you get a chance to go back and look at the budgets and see what's recommended, you may come up with another idea, Dave, about what you might want to do and let Kyle know. But it seems like we need to adopt some of these things if we don't have any major, not, 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 not right now. I'm just saying, in a comment back to Kyle, that, hey, I don't see any problem with most of these, but maybe there's, there's a couple on here that you don't like. Let him know that, so we can do something different. Otherwise, I think we meet again without having, yes, without having, yes.
Just an example, some of the simpler things, there's more than just me wanting to know. I've got Morrow Brothers holding squad cars just in case they wanted an answer. I told them two weeks ago, it would be approximately two weeks maybe. So there's people outside that are waiting for answers.
Right.
And, and, yeah, some of the things that accelerating this year, you know, if, if we are going to do some of those accelerations, we have to do them fairly quick.
So on the accelerations that you're talking about, is that factored in with the, still the 1.7 potential? Or is that going to reduce that by the?
That's factored into the 1.7.
I don't have a problem accelerating some of the stuff if we've got the money now.
Are there some time, are there some specific dates like the one you mentioned? What others are there like that we need to make a decision soon?
The squad cars, I'd like to have it on the next council meeting if, if that is something.
We're going to do, but, but are there others that need to be made in the next couple of weeks?
There, it's not really affecting this because it's in next year's budget. We have a cooling tower at the PD that needs to be replaced. It, it's 200, we put 200,000 in the building repairs, it's probably about 130,000 for it, but it's on the assembly line now. And if we really want to try to get it done next year, we probably need to try to commit to it fairly quick. They build about 12 a year.
It's an eight month, typically it's an eight month backlog.
Right.
Even currently with, it's on the production line, it's.
No, that would speed up.
I got you, so.
It's one that's not been spoken for.
When we say next year, we're talking May.
Right, we could get it possibly.
It's a cooling tower, so we need that for the summer.
Right.
So it would be beneficial to us to move on that.
So those two are, we could make it next meeting, or do we even have that much time on? On the cars, it sounds like we got that much time, but on the, on the cooling.
I think he's doing pretty good with squads, but I imagine he's got a lot of agencies calling him.
Right.
Cause he's typically order, he pre-orders. Typically we do it in Pelson's, but we didn't get it in in time this year, so we're going back to Morrow Brothers. And we did not order these, so we're, we're coming to him at the favor, do you have any extra squads?
And he does, does have a couple extras.
He does have that, yeah.
A squad and a truck.
I do think between now and the next meeting, we need to let Kyle know which ones we have any particular problem with, or you've got an idea that hasn't been shared yet. Otherwise, we're going to come back to that meeting, it's just like extending this meeting. You know, we just, we haven't made any decisions yet.
Do we want to have a special meeting between now and the next council meeting? Or do we want to add it to the next council meeting like we've done this time? As of right now, we don't have a lot on the March 7th meeting, but a couple of weeks, a lot of things.
I don't have, I don't have an issue with, with any of these accelerated.
I don't either. The two, the tower and the, and the squad cars?
Correct, yeah. And the other smaller projects, I don't have, I don't have a problem with those either.
The tower's actually in next year's budget.
They're viable.
We, we wouldn't have it until after May 1. So that one's just an ordering process.
So where is it on here?
It's, it's in the budget, so it's not in.
In this preliminary deficit?
Yes, it is. We wouldn't, we would not be paying for it this year because we're not going to have the, the equipment this year.
But you're accelerating, you're not showing this as.
It's, it's, the cooling tower is not an acceleration, other than we're accelerating, putting our name on the cooling tower.
So it still remains in next year's budget. That's why it's not on here.
Next year's budget.
Yes, that one still remains in next year's budget. It's just if we want it before summer.
Of next year.
Yeah, this coming summer.
Which is three months away.
Otherwise.
Yeah, it's going to be hot.
Otherwise, we're going to probably spend, we've been spending about 10 to 20,000 dollars a year on maintenance of the cooling tower.
Yeah, it's nickel or diamonds to do.
It is, they can't buy parts for it anymore, they got to make parts, they've got to. And we've got the same thing going on at the depot as well, but it isn't a little bit better than a question, but it's outlived its life and can't buy parts for it.
I, I would suggest we put them both on the next meeting's agenda, you can always remove them.
Yes.
If we don't want to do it. We don't pass, we, we got nothing to lose on putting them on the agenda at this point. We can defer it at that meeting or we can vote on and approve it.
Again, just whether you guys want to have another meeting between now and the next council meeting or we can do it at the next council meeting at the end of the meeting again.
I like having them at the end of this meeting, we don't have to try to get together. We've had some problems getting everybody together this time because of work schedules. You know, I would prefer doing it if we can, if we can get something accomplished, get some notes back to you as to what the major issues are and are, if there are any. It gives everybody a chance to go through the budget, you got two more weeks to take a look at the budget. And even schedule meetings with you and Beth if needed.
Right, that was the other thing, yeah, if you guys want to sit down and go through some things with Beth and I, just let us know. Right. That's, that was the other thing. Yeah. If you guys want to sit down and go through some things with Beth and I, just let us know. All agree on that?
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Seven. All right. ARPA funds. VM, West Side Drainage and the radios, repeaters and sports complex have been allocated already. We've spent the money on the digital radios or half of it. So then there's other items that we've always talked about on this, you know, lots of revenue in tourism, lots of revenues in water and sewer. The broadband at the water treatment plant, we've kind of gone a different route, so that was really not in the play anymore. Broadband City Hall and Depot. The broadband at City Hall is probably getting taken care of with the VoIP if we do that. We go to VoIP phones. It, it may be the same cost of what we're paying in telephones now, but it would run a fiber to this building, which would help all of our internet in this building. HVAC, City Hall, the depot, the PD, that's again, I put two hundred thousand in there. It's probably two hundred thousand for the depot. PD was, we could meet this one. It's a hundred and thirty thousand. And then City Hall, I have no clue on the, on price tag on it. It's a. Put it in nineteen sixty eight, it wouldn't be as, as much, but it would still be probably a hundred thousand dollars. It's, it's the oldest, but working the best.
Would there be any, would we have any harm if we didn't address these items yet until we got the budget?
No.
Pretty well approved.
No, there's no.
So it doesn't do any damage to the either year, this year or the budget?
No. No, this, this won't do anything.
Let's try to get the budget done. Then, then we'll maybe know.
Yeah.
What's more appropriate.
I guess the only thing I wanted to point out on, on here is, you know, future planning on a City Hall, million dollars, fire station, three million dollars, if we ever built a new fire station. Design for an addition to Fire Station Three, a hundred thousand dollars. Those are just some things. That dam repairs, I mean, those are some things that are some big projects that need to happen in the future. And again, it's hard to get into the budget. So those are things to think about with the ARPA funds.
Can you, can you and the department heads, or maybe just you, based on what you know? Can you prioritize these things based on what you would do? This is just a list at this point. If you, even if you said it was just A, B, or C, or one, two, three, what are the most important and the least important?
We, we could take a stab at it, but every department is going to probably rank theirs a little higher. So.
It's true, but still.
We, we can try to. But.
I can do it.
Well.
Go.
I'll get you mine. Well, if they are from your department, by the way, would it let you prioritize?
Which ones of your department?
Put it just in order.
Yeah.
Not everything can be number one. So you got to go through one through 10.
Of your department.
Of your department and say, these are mine in order.
Yep.
Then that would be helpful.
We can work on that. Okay. I'm done unless you guys have any other questions or anything else you'd like to discuss.
Good job.
Okay, so where are we on the Jeter?
Someone needs to make a motion to adjourn.
That's it? Nice, darn. That's easy.
No other discussion?
Mayor? Most dudes are.
Commissioner Cox, second?
There we go.
You might go second it?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Phipps, in Rock Hall.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Floss?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
No.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
That concludes our meeting. Thank you.